Are we on, Paulina?
We are on. Are you expecting anyone else as a special guest?
No, just me.
Okay.
We have, it looks like we have about 15 participants.
Yep, and you have Russ Baxley is raising his hand. Would you like me to allow him to talk?
Let me just welcome everyone for a second and we can certainly get into it. Hello, everyone. Thank you for joining our monthly Red Feather Lakes Community Conversation, virtually. I'm really looking forward to when we can have one of these in person. Maybe we'll have that option in August. We can talk more about that. So, we have about 15 participants. Paulina is from our IT department, and I think it would be best to give her a moment or two to share how this works and how folks can participate. I did have a couple of things that I wanted to update people on. I can be brief, and then really open it up for questions. And I know we had at least one person with a raised hand. So, with that said, Paulina, would you give us a quick overview of how this works?
Yes, so this is a webinar. So, one of the things that's a little different about a webinar versus the normal Zoom meeting that you might be used to attending, is that we will not see your faces. So, your video will not work. Even if we do allow you to talk, or you decide to talk, we will not see your face. And in addition to that, you will have to raise your hand if you're on video, or on the web version of this, or you will have to hit star nine if you have a question and would like to speak. That will let us know that you want to speak, and it'll raise your hand in the attendees queue. In addition to that, we also have the Q&amp;A area that you will see. And if you have any questions, you don't feel like speaking, but you would like to have a question given to John to answer, or comments, or feedback, or anything like that, feel free to do so through there, and we can make sure that he gets that, or that we have the question answered. I think I covered everything, John. Did I miss anything?
I think you're good, Paulina. And at this time, we have 17 participants, so that's great. If you'll allow me, I'd just like to maybe take five minutes to give you some updates, which I think are relevant to folks. And also, some of these updates are in response to questions that I received ahead of time from at least one person in particular, Gordon. Oh, there's Michelle.
I made it. I'm sorry I'm late. We were having some IT issues, and luckily Paulina jumped on, was able to start the meeting for me. But we figured it out, and so I'm here all as well.
I'm...
Thank you, Paulina.
No problem.
I'm very grateful for the two of you. So, I was just saying, Michelle, Paulina has explained how this platform works. I think folks are getting, their skill set is increasing with these platforms. And I was about to give a quick update on a few key topics, including some of the questions that were presented to us ahead of time. So, I'm going to try to do that in less than five minutes, and then open it up for questions and dialogue, and to find out exactly what's on people's minds. The first set of updates I wanted to give were related to the thing that's on our minds for a lot of us, the COVID-19 situation. And one of the things that's really important for people to be aware of is that recently, maybe as of yesterday, or Tuesday, we have updated our website, our COVID-19 website, and there's now this quote "data dashboard." And if you haven't seen it, it was in the newspaper today. They did provide a link. I'm sure Michelle or Paulina can provide you a link. But I think it's a really, really informative tool for folks to understand, you know, what the county health department is considering, the factors, the early warning indicators that we are constantly monitoring in terms of how we are progressing forward with, you know, opening up businesses, allowing people to get together and be outside and everything else. One of the things on this data dashboard is it has a sort of a clock or something, or a gauge, and it assesses a risk factor. And it shows, for example, that we're in the, there's low, medium, and high. And we're in the medium section of this graphic, and that is based on a composite of what we call early warning indicators that are everything from new positive tests to trends over a three-day average, to hospitalizations, use of intensive care units, and all of that. And if you go to this dashboard, you'll see that all of these indicators are in a good place right now, which is not to say, once again, as Tom Gonzalez always says, we have made great strides in flattening the curve, the proverbial curve. However, we're not out of the woods, because that thing could spike up again if we don't do things wisely and carefully. We're seeing in about half the states in America where there have been some increases in positive COVID-19 cases. We've seen a little bit of that in some of the other counties in Colorado. But Laramo County is in good shape, and I want to draw your attention to that data dashboard. It's really, really a good tool. The second thing I'd like to mention is a lot of questions around, gosh, there's Michelle and Paulina, they're the best. And you can take a look at this, and if you have questions later on, you know, please ask, and I'll do my best to answer them. It is telling that our infection rate, you know, right now, we're providing information on the normal COVID-19 testing, and then we have the blood testing, the serology tests, and all of that is being broken out. And you can see that in terms of the COVID-19 infection rate, I think we're something like at about 3.9% or something like that. So, these are really important, and this guides local public health folks in coordination with the state, you know, what we're monitoring, and, you know, how we feel confident, thank you, how we feel confident, you know, to move forward on allowing for more mass gatherings. Yesterday, the governor expressed concern a little bit, and just asking, pleading with folks as the Fourth of July holiday comes up, you know, to just be really smart about how we're going to get together to celebrate our nation's birth. On the topic of schools, from previous newspaper stories, it was indicated that the school district was looking at four options. The one option that was kind of rising to the top was this quote "hybrid model," where when the schools start up again in August, the students, the children, would be in the classroom two days a week, and online two days a week. And so, that was the sort of the prevailing scenario that was being considered, based on surveys, based on feedback that they'd gotten from families and students. The county has been encouraging, perhaps pushing, the school district to look at 100% opening of classrooms. And so, we're in the process of figuring out, you know, what needs to be in place in order for that to happen. And frankly, that's something that I'd like to see happen, because a lot of children don't have the best access to high-speed internet. A lot of children don't learn best by online learning. So, just be aware that there are a lot of discussions going on. The health department is working with the school district, including Thompson School District, including Estes Park School District, including the mountain schools like up in Livermore and Red Feather Lakes and Stowe Prairie, to see how we could possibly open up the schools 100%, you know, obviously practicing public health protocols. On the matter of school buses, you know, I think there was a story that said, based on the current guidance, we can only get like 10% of the kids, you know, get on a school bus to get to school, and this includes kids with special needs. Well, again, if we can get our variances approved, and we can work with the school districts and the state, this also could change. The last thing I'll mention on this, I guess I'm going over the darned five minutes. But it's important for folks to know that we are looking forward, I've mentioned this before, but there is this thing called the Long-Term Recovery Collaborative, an action plan. And we have a variety of county staff. We've hired someone working with United Way, and we've developed this framework, and it's been recently refined. But the idea is that we are working with all the various public and private sector partners to look at what we need to do, you know, to move forward four months from now, you know, when the schools open up, and six months from now and beyond. And that's something that folks should be watching this. We're calling it the Laramo County COVID-19 Collaborative Recovery Plan. And one of the things that would be an opportunity for you to participate or engage is, at some point, we're going to be sending out a questionnaire based on the four focuses, excuse me, the four areas of focus. There are four areas of focus, and then there are various sector task forces. But the questionnaire will go out to key folks, and if you're interested up there in the mountains, because we want to get that input, the questions are trying to identify unmet needs. How are things going before the pandemic issue came before us? And how are things now? And what is it that folks need moving forward? So, please be aware of that. And the next thing I'd like to update you on is the Broadband Strategic Initiative. And this relates to one of the questions that I think Gordon posed about some of the activity that Century Link is doing in the Glacier View Meadows area. So, the thing that's most noteworthy about the Broadband Strategic Initiative, and in my opinion, this is very exciting, and that is it's starting July 1st, which I believe is next Wednesday, for six weeks, we will be going live with our bandwidth speed test and survey. So, there is a website, and I actually have it. It's, what is it? It's speed, what the heck is it? Speedtest.laramo.org. Hopefully, I have that right, Paulina. I'm sure one of you can check. But the importance of this, folks, is that when this website goes live, you will have your choice, the opportunity to go to this website, and it's a very interactive website. It will ask you a bunch of questions, but it also has the ability, I don't know how, it's out of my skill level, it's beyond my pay grade, it has the ability to determine the speed that where you're connecting with the website. Look at that. And the interactive portion of this is, as you're providing your information, and as the website is picking up on your internet speed, broadband, bandwidth speed, it's putting that onto a map. And the goal of this speed test, after six weeks, will analyze the information and the data. And this will help us in terms of seeking resources, working collaboratively with private sector partners like Putter Valley REA, like Century Link perhaps. And so, it's really critical that you be aware that this thing is going to go live as of July 1st to August 15, and we hope that you will spread the word and participate. The third thing I'd like to, oh, and as far as Glacier View Meadows and the activity that's been going on out there, I did put in an email. I sent an email to our IT director, and, but he was off today. I haven't heard back from them. But we are aware of the activity. One of our staff people was up there and took some photographs of the trenching activity. I would assume, and we'll find out more specifics and more accurate information, unless Paulina knows, that what's happening here is Century Link has received federal dollars in order to, you know, to, excuse me, to put in fiber optic line like they are doing out at Glacier View Meadows. So, I think they're trying to comply with what, you know, what dollars they've received in order to begin to light up some of these communities. So, that's the best that I can offer at this point. But we will find out more precisely what exactly is happening, and what are the timeframes, and who will that impact, and how. So, I wanted to share that. Oh, County Road 74E. I better get to that before, before we just pause and take a deep breath for a moment, right, folks? So, it was brought to my attention and to our attention on the weekend, there is construction activity happening on Red Feather Lakes Road, I think near McNehe Hill. That is to replace a culvert or a bunch of culverts. And that construction work will be in effect through the summer, I think, through August. And it's to help with drainage and flood control and culverts and all of that. The complaint was that there was an automatic signaling, traffic lights, that were not really synchronized to the realities of what's on the ground, especially on the weekend, when there's a lot of traffic going westbound up to Red Feather Lakes, Dowdy Lake, and all those other places, and then on the return. Since those complaints have been brought to our attention, we have reached out to the construction contractor, and there is a traffic control contractor. And this weekend, they will have two traffic control folks manually operating those traffic lights, so that you won't have an eight-tenths of a mile backup of cars, because they're on some automatic signal. As I understand that, I haven't been up there, but they've created these shoe fly detours around the construction site, you know, so cars have the ability, vehicles, to go up and down the 74E. So, that's what I know about that situation. And I asked Mark Peterson, who apparently got stuck in one of those backups, because he was going to visit his cabin up at Red Feather Lakes. They are fully aware of this. They have talked to the contractors. There will be some people on the ground this weekend, but it'll be helpful to know if it's how helpful it is. So, more input would be welcome, and also during the week, if there are issues that have been happening during the week. I'll hold off on this one, but there were concerns raised by some folks who live up at Crystal Lakes area about recreational sports shooting. And if folks want to know more about that, what I have learned, I don't know if Susan is on this call, I'm happy to provide you with that information. Oh, the last thing I'll mention is that we're not going to have a meeting in July, so we will not have our regular Red Feather Lakes meeting in July, so you all can have a break from me. And we will be having our Wellington meeting July 2nd, and Wellington, Waverly, Buckeye meeting, and our Fort Collins-Laporte meeting July 11th. But just the middle of the summer to take a break of this, break from this. And I am hoping, cautiously hoping, that maybe we could actually meet up at Red Feather. But I think we wouldn't be able to meet in the library in the normal place. We'd want to meet in a place like the Community Association Building across the way, which has more space, and where we would be able to spread out. So, please keep that in mind. And we will have, at that meeting, we will have Daniel Baucher with the Coalition for the Putter River Watershed. And he will provide us with a detailed update on the elk fire analysis provided by the Division of, the State Division of Fire Control and Prevention. So, that's going to be our guest, at least that person on August, whatever, the 4th, or, you know, whatever we do, I lose track of some of these things. And if you have suggestions about other folks, please let me know, and we'll see, we'll do our best to accommodate. Hats off to Darlene and the library folks. You've done extraordinary work in conjunction with the Girl Scout Ranch and the North Forty Mountain Alliance to provide, you know, the food pantry that you've provided. My understanding is that you've helped about 105 families or more, you know, homebound folks, people that are struggling between Livermore and Red Feather Lakes, 2,000 pounds of food a week. And I know that you have made some requests in terms of additional resources, and certainly the county is looking at that. I think Shell gave you some good ideas. I attempted to give you some ideas, and we'll continue to work with you on that, as the Girl Scout Ranch needs to transition into actually doing programs for Girl Scouts, although I bet the Girl Scouts were volunteering as well. I'm going to stop there, and please forgive me, because I know I've exceeded my five minutes. I asked Michelle to give me a virtual kick in the shin, but she's too kind, so that is not happening.
You had good information going there, Commissioner, so I didn't want to stop you. But Russ has had his hand raised for a while.
Yes.
We have a couple Q&amp;As. So, Russ, I'm going to go ahead and give you permission to talk, and then you might, you're going to have to unmute yourself. So, if you're on the phone, it's going to be star six to unmute yourself. Or there's, if you're on... Oh, I'm sorry. Star nine to unmute yourself. Or if you're on your computer, Russ, there's a little, in the bottom left corner, there's a little microphone that says mute. You'll want to click on that. There you go.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
You can. Go ahead.
Yes, my question is, the recreational shooting that the commissioner talked about is, they have to drive on private Crystal Lakes Road to get back into the national forests where they're doing their recreational shooting. And they're using weapons as high as 50 caliber, which travels for five miles. And that, those kind of weapons absolutely have no business anywhere near our neighborhood.
Thank you, Russ. Thank you, sir, for bringing that to our attention. Let me, let me respond in what I know so far, that could be done in the short term, and what is being done in the long term regarding US Forest Service. So, my understanding of what's happening west in the national forest lands west of Crystal, the Crystal Lakes community, is that, you know, folks are doing recreational sports shooting, and apparently they're using high-caliber firearms, and that would be a concern. Based on a message that we got from the Crystal Lakes District Ranger, Katie Donahue, she, I think she informed some of the folks that, too short, well, first of all, one is that they have deployed more law enforcement officers to that area. So, hopefully, they're patrolling it a little bit more, a little bit better, Russ, and folks. And, but it's important to keep in mind that there are four law enforcement folks that, whose territory includes the Arapahoe Roosevelt National Forest and the Pawnee Grasslands. But that's one short-term action that the Forest Service took, and that is to try to make available more, you know, more patrolling by US Forest Service law enforcement. She also indicated that, like what you just described, it would be helpful for them to get that input, because on a case-by-case basis, they will consider closing down an area if they have these very objective criteria, and they will consider closing down an area to recreational sports shooting if it's determined to be a big safety thing. So, this information, I can certainly provide it, but I would encourage you to provide it to the, you know, Reagan Cloudman is one person, Katie Donahue, so they know that this kind of activity is going on. So, providing the input, greater law enforcement, on the road access thing, sir, what I understand is that there's a section on the road that's private. And I think Katie had suggested that you folks, I don't know how you would do it, I don't know if there are gates, you could prohibit, you could prohibit people, the public, from going on that private access road, and that would, that would have the effect of limiting, you know, folks that are going out into the national forests there and discharging the firearms. So, those are some of the things that were suggested in the short term. In the longer term, there is a forest amendment plan, excuse me, forest plan amendment. And they are looking at this holistically in terms of areas that are unsafe for this recreational sports shooting to occur. And so, there is a process underway, but that's a little bit more long-term. And they're not going to systematically shut down areas until, or they'll do that in conjunction with bringing online some specific shooting ranges for this activity. We've had some success with that in Boulder County. So, that, there are some, there's an email that I got from Reagan Cloudman, which provides more details. If you've not seen that, sir, I'm more than happy to send that to you. But the long term is, you know, to develop this strategy in relation to shooting ranges, to look at areas in the Arapahoe National Forest that are really, really unsafe based on these criteria. I am planning to have a meeting with either both the district and the deputy district supervisors of the Forest Service, along with our Director of Natural Resources, Daylon Figs, to be updated. And we hope to do that in the next couple of weeks. I hope that's satisfactory for now.
Thanks, Russ. It also looks like Rich had the same, basically the same question as Russ about an update on the shooting of large-caliber weapons and rapid-fire weapons close to Crystal Lakes.
You know, Michelle, if I may add two things to that follow-up question, which I neglected to mention in the first oration of this, and that is, it was also informed, if people are feeling, you know, eminent, they're eminently in danger, of course, they recommend you call law enforcement. So, there is coordination between the US Forest Service Law Enforcement Rangers and our deputies. But as you all know, we don't have tons of these folks patrolling, and so they do the best they can. But if you're feeling eminently in danger, you know, because of these kinds of weapons being discharged, it's, I think it's appropriate to call the law enforcement, and certainly to provide this input to the US Forest Service. And again, the other thing is that the email that I received from Reagan Cloudman with US Forest Service, if anyone wants to receive that email, I did send it to Susan, Susan Ritter, who brought this issue to my attention. I am more than happy, with the help of Michelle, to get that information to you.
Real quick, and this is a good transition, I guess it's not real quick, but this is a good transition to what you were just talking about, Commissioner. Jenny Price has a question. She asks, can you please clarify safety in Red Feather Lakes, Crystal Lakes, lakes in the surrounding areas? There seems to be conflicting information on who does enforcement, what can be enforced, and all the hows and whys, specifically regarding trespassing on private property and random shooting on weekends?
I, and that's from Jenny, is that correct, a person? Jenny, in relation to the recreational sports shooting, I feel like I've, I've addressed that question. If you feel like there are parts of it that I've not, please clarify. If you're talking about trespassing in general, if someone is trespassing, it is within your purview to contact, you know, the appropriate authorities to, you know, inform them, because that's against the law. You know, the people who are supposed to be doing this recreational sports shooting, and this is an area that has not been closed down. It could be closed down based on the criteria, if they hear from enough people like you and Russ and other folks and Susan. But otherwise, I would say that local law enforcement, the deputies that are patrolling, and certainly informing the US Forest Service, and they, and asking them to expedite whatever processes they have in place to determine if this, if these two areas west of Crystal Lakes subdivision, if they should be shut down.
Commissioner, kind of a follow-up comment from Susan Ritter on what you're talking about. She says, closing the private roads in Crystal Lakes is not realistic, as they have potential for serving as fire evacuation routes. When the boundaries for the ban were being determined, it was also suggested that the Forest Service consider blocking off the problem area with large boulders on the national forest land. Doing so would solve a lot of the current problems. Just a comment.
Thank you, Susan. And you can, you can filter this stuff through me, but I think you have direct access to people like Reagan Cloudman and Katie Donahue, the Crystal Lakes District Ranger. And it is my humble opinion that you folks need to provide this valuable input to them directly. You can certainly CC me, and I think they will, I didn't know about this boulder thing. I'm not sure what I could say about that, but they would be the ones who would be most informed to respond, whether that's a realistic short-term solution. And again, I reiterate, that if enough people express concerns, it seems to me that would elevate this as a priority to determine whether or not those areas should be shut down.
Commissioner, one more follow-up from Jenny, who asked the original question.
Yep.
She asked, when people are in Crystal without permission, will law enforcement pursue charges and issue tickets?
Good question, valid question. I'm afraid I don't know the answer to that question. But Michelle, please take note of that, and let us follow up with the sheriff's office. One thing I can say, Jenny, two things I can say. One is, at the next Wellington Community Conversation Virtual, which is July 2nd, 7:30 AM to 9:00, we will have two guests, and one will be providing more details about the broadband speed test thing that I talked about. But another one will be a captain from the sheriff's office giving us an update. So, there will be a representative from the sheriff's office at that July 2nd meeting. If you folks would like, at the August meeting, in addition to having Daniel Baucher from the Coalition talk about the Elks Fire Report, I can invite folks from the Forest Service to talk about this issue, and/or, you know, folks from the sheriff's office. In fact, I did try to get folks, there were four people that we reached out to in the Forest Service to join us today, and they were not able to, not because they didn't want to, but it was a short-term, it was a short notice... want to, but it was a short term, it was a short notice, and there were scheduling conflicts. And actually, I think a few folks might have actually been on a reprieve or a bit of a vacation since everyone's been working so darn hard these last three months. But I can have them come in August or ask them if that's what folks want. And I bet Paulina could do one of her wonderful little, or Michelle can do it too, one of her little polling things at the appropriate time. You know, do we want to bring someone from the Forest Service to talk about this specific issue for the August meeting? And perhaps someone from the Sheriff's Office to give us an update.
Sure. Jenny, Jenny was, just chimed in and said, yes, they would like some coordinated answers and solutions. And then Susan Ritter had one more comment before I think we want to jump to the next question.
Yes.
But Susan says, the irony of not being out in the woods with COVID is that COVID has driven everyone up into the woods. An increase in illegal ATV use on 73C, underage children on vehicles and ATVs speeding on 73, and no evidence of consistent law enforcement at all. We need a deputy that is purposely assigned to patrol this area.
Well, thank you, Susan. Again, you're welcome to send that to me. I think directly to the people that can respond to that is the best way to go. CCing me since I attempt to serve the people of District One and the entire county. I can add to that, Susan, that we've seen this, I mean, the, it's, the usage that we're seeing at, for example, the four reservoirs that are part of the county system, and in general, our county open space areas has been extraordinary, the increase. We're adapting to that. We're bringing on some more folks, but we're definitely seeing that as well. And I know that up at Redfeather Lakes, you know, I think all the parking lots for the trailheads like to Molly Lake and other amazing places like that are just, you know, packed to the rim. And so we are aware of that, the Forest Service is aware of that. You know, one of the efforts that's more long term, and perhaps residents would like to have this as a way to engage, is there is something called NOCO. You might want to check it out on the website. It's pretty, it's pretty interesting, but it's called NOCO Places 2050, 2050, as in, you can believe it, the year 2050. And we want to resolve these things much sooner than that, of course. But because of changing demographics, increasing population, there are five counties working collaboratively with various public and private sector stakeholders, outdoor recreation industry folks, Forest Service, Parks and Wildlife, et cetera, to look at management practices. Look at that. I'm just amazed how these folks do these things. But you see from these pictures, this is an issue in particular that's affecting the natural areas, the open spaces along the Front Range in particular. And we are doing our best to look at what we can do, for example, in the medium term and certainly in the long term. So I wanted to bring this effort to your attention because here's, you can see the players. It's an example of a collaborative effort to look long term, you know, at some of these really critical issues. Thank you, folks. Gosh, so impressed. Oh, unmute, unmute. Michelle?
Sorry, for some, usually my spacebar works, but it wasn't right then.
Paulie?
So we have a couple people, having continued comments about what we were just talking about with the shooting around Crystal Lakes. And I will get to those, but Gordon has had a question for a little while, and I think it's only fair to go on his question before we come back, if there's time, about the shooting and the trespassing and the enforcement. So Gordon has a really good question. He says, how can we help get the word out about the internet speed test?
Thanks, Gordon. And make sure that I give an update. One of the questions that Gordon might have posed was about the Livermore Satellite Maintenance Facility. So Michelle and Paulie to make sure I talk about that a little bit. But to answer Gordon's question, first of all, there is a, there's a press release that's going to go out, and there is, and Michelle can speak to this, there is a, how would I say, a comprehensive, inclusive communication strategy, outreach strategy. And in fact, we were talking about this with Mark Pfaffinger, our IT Director, and Lorna Volker, our Assistant County Manager, who are directly involved in this broadband work along with others. And we discussed other key partners that should receive this information. But it'll be on the website, it'll be on the next, it'll, information will be in the next, I believe, the next in the Limerick County Really Awesome Connection Newsletter. I'm going to put it out on my accountability report that I'm hoping I get done before July 1st. So there are different ways. And Gordon, if you have specific suggestions, or like, for example, if there's a Nextdoor thing with Glacier View Meadows folks, or a Nextdoor thing, or, you know, an email list with Redfeather Lakes and Crystal Lakes, you know, and the Livermore folks, please get that information to us and perhaps Michelle, because we want to make sure we're doing the outreach, especially we're targeting unincorporated Limerick County and in the unserved and underserved areas. And if I may add one more thing, sorry that I tend to add things to these conversations, but I think it's important and I think people would be interested. One of the things, one of the understandings that have come out of discussions with, you know, when the schools closed after spring break, and it was all online learning, and then you have a lot of kids and families that don't have access, don't have the connectivity to, to high speed internet and broadband. One sector of that is folks who live in mobile home parks, manufactured housing communities, especially folks in the quote, growth management areas. So we've identified that as a real issue, regardless of how things, the hope is that schools are going to open up, but there's still going to be a need for kids to have access to have that kind of connectivity to do their homework and other things. So one of the, we want to get this, this speed testing out to those folks as well. And we have some ideas around that, and we need to make sure that Michelle knows about those ideas. But one of the short term things is that a task force has been developed that is focusing on some possible short term solutions to run fiber to some of these mobile home parks like Putter Valley Mobile Home Park, which is in the GMA, like Park Lane, which is in the East Mulberry Corridor, like Hickory Village, for example. And we've had, we've been building up these relationships. But it might be possible to run fiber optic, not to every home, because that's a pretty big deal, but to the community. And then there's technology that people like Paulina understand that where you can broadcast out the signals. So folks could have much more reliable, and the children in particular, but much more reliable high speed internet, rather than these mobile Wi-Fi hotspots that we've tried to do, you know, and the school district gets a lot of credit. So to me, that's an example of a really creative, innovative things, and I'm hoping and praying that we can actually pull that off. And how we would pay for that and who would do it? Well, it turns out that when the voters approve the Fort Collins Measure to create a utility around internet stuff, the connection thing, conexión, we check the ordinance, and it does allow them to run line fiber beyond the city limits, like into the GMA. But we still have to figure out how we're going to cost share that. And one possibility is that the county will be receiving $30 million in CARES Act federal dollars that are COVID-19 related. 15 million of that approximately will go to Limerick County, and the other 15 million or so will go to the eight municipalities that are located in, you know, in the county. And it's for reimbursable expenses. So for example, if we can figure out the technology and the infrastructure logistics with the mobile home parks and the fiber, and it's going to cost half a million bucks to do this, I don't know, that would be, in my mind, that would be a very appropriate reimbursable, excuse me, reimbursable expense, you know, to help these children have, you know, reliable access to, to internet so they can do their homework. That's another long winded answer. Good Lord.
Sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
One more thing to add. Sorry about that. Um, is that better now? Okay, it's not so bad. We will put it out on Nextdoor too. So I know that Nextdoor is used very, oh, quite a bit there in that area, so we will put it out on Nextdoor as well, the link to the speed test. And Gordon says that he has access to the owners of all the communications channels that he mentions, and that he'll work with me to make sure we send consistent info throughout. So.
That's great, Gordon. Thank you. And again, to reinforce why this is really important, we need objective information, we need data to really identify where are the areas where the speed is and the connectivity reliability is not in place. With that information, we can go to the state, we can go to other public and private sector partners and say, for example, Putter Valley REA, they would, REAs are stepping up throughout the country and even in parts of Colorado, because they have the electric, you know, transmission lines and all of that, and it's totally within their realm to be able to include fiber optic line, which they're doing in some cases, but they're not lighting it up. We need to be able to make the case to them that there's a good business model for this, and if we can work collaboratively, we might be able to draw down some federal dollars, not necessarily CARES Act dollars, but USDA Rural Development, reconnect funds, all that kind of stuff, that would go to the entity like perhaps Century Link, that must be getting some money, you know, to actually put the, you know, install the stuff that's going to allow people to have access. So this is really, really important, this, this speed test. And now I understand how it works and the, the online portal, and it's interactive, and you'll see a map, and it's, it's pretty cool. Oh, would people like to hear about Livermore Satellite Maintenance Facility?
That's probably, we still have some comments regarding the shooting that we can get back to, but I think updating on Livermore is a good idea right now.
And yeah, thank you, Michelle. You're such a marvelous host. So what I learned about an hour ago or so from our Road and Bridge Director, Todd Jergens, is that the work on the Livermore Satellite Maintenance Facility is scheduled to be completed in August. And I think that shortly after that, one would presume that it will be quote, operational, which I think was the essence of the question that was presented to us. Related to that was another question, because if you remember in those discussions, those deliberations, there were two sites being considered. Site one is where it's happening, site two was the other property. The question was, did we take into consideration the cost comparisons with the amount of dirt that had to be removed to, you know, to fix that curb where the current site is? And according to what Todd Jergens informed me of about an hour or so ago, excuse me, they did, of course, in the overall projected, but, project budget, they determined that it would be an additional cost of $450,000. In other words, if we had gone with the other site, you know, farther up the mountain on the property that was being offered, it would have cost an additional $450,000 to do the road work or, you know, whatever was necessary. So that was one of the factors that the county considered in determining finally, you know, to go with the site where it's being built.
Commissioner, I have a poll ready to go. Do you want, do you want to try the poll first?
Yeah, why not?
Let's see what we can do. All right, we're going to launch poll. So what I asked was, should we invite someone from the Forest Service and/or the Sheriff's Office in August?
Good for you.
Our options are yes, both, no, neither, Forest Service only, or Sheriff's Office only. So we'll let people, most people are voting here overwhelmingly. I know you guys can't see this right now, but it looks like overwhelmingly we have people wanting both. So I'll give a couple more seconds to vote if y'all want to vote, and we'll stop here in about five. One person replied Sheriff's Office only, and I will show everybody the results.
Thank you, Michelle. Good for you.
So there we go. It looks like most people want both the Forest Service and the Sheriff's Office in August.
Great. So we will do our best, and Michelle, if you could support me in that effort, we could contact, talk to Alicia to reach out to the proper people. Please note that now for the August meeting, I think we'll be successful in getting US Forest Service and/or somebody from the Sheriff's Office. But note that we're also going to have Daniel from the Coalition for the Putter River Watershed. But again, Daniel doesn't need a whole lot of time, and a lot of it will be Q and A. We'll have these three folks, so it'll be a good meeting in August, and God willing, hopefully we can do it in person. But I think we need to do it in a bigger space, and we can work on that as well, Michelle. The Community Association Building across there on Firehouse Lane.
Absolutely. Um, so we still have some comments regarding the shoot, the shooting that's happening. And since it doesn't look like anybody has their hand raised, I'll just go through these comments, Commissioner, and respond as you see fit. Randall Roberts had the first comment, and it looks like he's still here with us on the meeting. So one clarification, the primary area of shooting concern is actually not west of Crystal Lakes. It is in between two non-continuous sections of Crystal Lakes, with shooting on the south direction directly threatening and having already hit homes within two filings within the association. So that's what Robert has to say to clarify things up. Susan Stevens says, there is a one mile strip of land from the south boundary of Crystal Lakes ninth filing and Dead Man's Road that is only one eighth mile in width. It also gets very crowded with campers. Every weekend, there is shooting in that area. Susan's home borders this area, and multiple times they've had bullets flying onto their property, into their pump house or over their heads. They've made multiple calls to the Sheriff's Department over a 10 year period and have made multiple complaints to the Forest Service on 10 years that has not been effective. Um, and then Susan says, she thinks that respectfully, Commissioner, we have an immediate need for the Sheriff to patrol the violations on county roads. Who do we need to contact to get a committed deputy coverage, especially on the weekend? So she had a question.
Yeah, I don't recall the, okay, are there other questions related to those concerns?
No, those are our three kind of things about shooting.
Thank you. And I guess my response would be, first of all, just to express my appreciation for clarifying some of the things that I may not have gotten 100% right. And again, I don't know how else I can reinforce that this input is incredibly valuable. And I think the most direct way, at least to the Forest Service folks, to demonstrate the urgency of this matter is to contact, you know, somehow, see if there's a way to compile this information and send it to Reagan CC me. That is, if you're more comfortable emailing me, then do it. Sometimes I, you know, because I deal with so many emails, it's not always easy to be as responsive, but I know this is a really, really urgent thing. I'm better understanding how dangerous it is, and I think this to me elevates to the point where the Forest Service needs to consider, you know, shutting this thing down if, you know, based on their criteria. As far as the deputies not patrolling or not being responsive, perhaps you could send that email to me, because I can't, I know we've had some folks up there at Redfeather Lakes, but I can't remember the captain or the deputy that's responsible for that area. Maybe Michelle knows, but we can certainly, you know, coming from me, I can pose that to the Sheriff's Office and. And, and again, do my best to inform them that there are concerns, you know, the shootings. You know, patrolling the, the county roads and, and see what they say. Some of it is a resource issue, I, I, but you, I guess you get tired of hearing that. And, and you all know how to get ahold of me by email, JacobFollis, JacobFollis@Limerick.org.
Thanks, Commissioner.
You're welcome.
We have one, and it's not necessarily in the form of a question, it's more of a statement from Herbert. Herbert says, Crystal Lake needs better coordination between Limerick County Building Department and our Architectural Control Committee.
Well. And once again, maybe Michelle, you could get that, that, you know, the contact person. I know we create a spreadsheet sometimes on this. And I can certainly share that with our, our Building Department folks. And, and I think the deliverable on that would be to have the Building Department folks connect with the. Crystal Lakes Architectural Committee and get to the bottom of things and figure out how to address whatever the concerns are.
Sounds good, Commissioner. It looks like we have another question from Susan. Um, Susan's control is for, oh, Herbert says, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Concern is patrol for traffic violations separate from shooting. It looks like we, we have concerns for both of those things. I think she wanted to clarify that. Particularly underage drivers speeding and a need for immediate response, especially on weekends. We contact, should we contact you by email or follow-up? Or is there someone in the Sheriff's Office we should contact about this issue?
There is, there are some folks in the Sheriff's Office, but I, I can't recall who they are. I know we have Captain, I think it's Mike Reardon, who will be at the Wellington Meeting next, I guess, next Thursday. And, and at, at least for now, friends and neighbors, I would say contact me and I'll find out or, you know, with Michelle's help here. We'll find out and, 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 you know, it, it's interesting. Again, that's why these things, in my opinion, are important and I hope you agree. So out of this conversation, I'm realizing that the last time we had deputies patrol, deputies who patrol the area up there was pre-COVID-19. And the world has dramatically changed and you're seeing a lot more folks up there, a lot more visitation. And, and some of that is, is illegal trespassing. Some of that is not following the rules, which, you know, which can put people in danger or at risk. So all the more reason why we need to. You know, get someone from the Sheriff's Office. And, and maybe with Michelle, I need to rethink. I thought we could use a, you could use a break for me in July, but maybe we need to go back to the, that July meeting. I, I wonder, that might be another polling question. If, if Michelle or Paulina can do that, would you like us to bring, have the meeting in July? Earlier I had said that. We had decided to cancel it and I would just have two of these. But if, if folks feel strongly that we should have these updates sooner than August. I think we can probably bring that back. But all good points, valid points, and folks are making good.
I'm working on the poll right now, Commissioner, but we don't have any other questions and no one has their hands raised. So this would be a good time, as I'm working on the poll, for you to give any other updates that you, you maybe didn't.
Well, I thank you. I'm, I'm taking a look at my notes and all of that. I, I think I've. I've pretty much covered it. Clearly, the. The sports shooting issue is, is a concern. The number of folks that are visiting the Red Feather, Crystal Lakes area and the, and the Forest Service land and the trails is a big concern. So I think I've addressed that and, and the really important proactive thing is the, is for folks to participate in this. Broadband bandwidth speed test and survey. I think that's going to give us a lot of really valuable information. So I don't have anything. Really to add.
All right, so I'm going to launch the poll then. Um, it's a pretty simple one. Would you like to have a meeting in July? I would guess that we're going to have to do a virtual meeting in July. What do you think about that?
I'll take that under advisement, but I think you're right. I mean, we have to still. I mean, one thing related to that though, Michelle, is, and it's, it is relevant. And that is, I, I may have alluded to this earlier. But the, you know, these different phases that we've all been dealing with that have come from the Governor and the State Department of Public Health and Environment. So you know, the stay-at-home, which as difficult as it was, did help us to be a lot more successful than other places. To contain, control this novel coronavirus situation. We went from stasis, stay-at-home to safer-at-home. And as of July 1st, unless something happens in the next week with, with, you know, big spike in things. We're supposed to go to this protect your neighbors phase. And that is less restrictions, you know, more flexibility at the local level. And, and I've seen some guidance on that. They were wanting feedback. I did provide feedback. Well, what do you know? Look at that darn poll. Is this poll of a hundred percent wanting us to meet in July, is this statistically valid?
One hundred percent.
Okay, well, the people have spoken and, and we'll, I'll work with Michelle and we'll need to let Alicia know. And, you know, maybe the priority would be to get, you know, the sports shooting folks here, you know, there. And the Sheriff's folks there. And maybe we could still keep Daniel for the August meeting, kind of spread it out. But we will get that back on the calendar and I will certainly consult with Michelle and others. I was trying to get at this, this protect your neighbors thing. Might create some space for us to be able to do it in person. But a lot of it frankly is, are people willing to do the public health protocols? Are people willing, if we're in an indoor setting, even if we're six feet apart, to make sure that we've done the best, you know, with our hand washing? And that we're willing to wear the masks when we need to wear the, the masks. That's going to be really critical. But it could be that in our protect your neighbors phase, that, you know, that, right now, the maximum is up to 50 people. In an indoor setting, depending on the square footage and a bunch of other things. That may change and, and that might give us more flexibility. But at this point, count on virtual, because I generally listen to what Michelle says.
Well, and Commissioner, there's always, and I don't, I shouldn't even promise this, or I'm not promising anything, but there, you, you could think about doing an outdoor meeting. It's a nice time of year up in Red Feather, so. That's an option too. I don't know where. I don't, I don't know Red Feather well enough to say that there's a place to do that, but.
Actually, actually, spot-on suggestion. I was kind of going there. But if folks have suggestions for outdoors, I know there are great places. And then, you know, for folks who are, I, I don't want to exclude anyone, but maybe we could find a trail where not a lot of people go on and we could do a, a hike in a, in a meeting. That would be fun.
Yeah, I know, we've had Commissioners before do similar things. So that would be fun. And we do have a couple comments, a comment and a question. So Susan Ritter wanted to say that she really appreciates your listening to the people of Red Feather and being willing to accommodate their needs and requests. So I wanted to thank you for saying that, Susan. Gordon says, at the last work session, this is a question. At the last work session, the broadband task force had with the Commissioners, there was a proposal to work with PV REA to deliver broadband to the rural areas. Is there anything to report about that?
Well, I, I think I've touched on that, but there, we did have a meeting with representatives of Putter Valley Rural Electric Association. This was last year, maybe in the fall, and it was a good discussion. And Putter Valley REA at that time was still reluctant to get into the business of providing. Broadband or high-speed internet, even though they were, you know, totally acknowledging that they were laying line, fiber optic line. Where they were extending their electric lines out to some of their substations. So some of that infrastructure is being put in place, but it's not being quote lit up. And, and that's, that's what we need to figure out. So the update is that once we get the results from the speed test and the, our smart IT people. Analyze that information and provide a report to the Commissioners. That will give us the objective information to allow us to go out and have a follow-up meeting this fall with Putter Valley REA. To see if this new data would give them more incentives to get into the game. Because frankly, there are other REAs in Colorado that are doing this. The statewide Colorado REA Association is, is encouraging this. And I think we just need to work collaboratively and, and help build supportive business model, you know, to make this happen. So I think the plan is, once we have the data and the report, the, the plan is to do a follow-up meeting with Putter Valley REA in the fall.
Thank you. And Gordon, Gordon has one, has a suggestion for where our July meeting could be. And I made note of this, Commissioner, but he says, the pavilion next to the Red Feather Lakes POA building would be a great place for the July meeting. So I made note of that and I'll hand that off to Alicia. You guys want to work that out?
Yeah, let's, thank you, Gordon. Thank you.
Another suggestion from Paul, and I'll make note of this as well. Is the local churches for an outdoor meeting or the Girl Scout Ranch. So. Thank you for all the suggestions, everybody.
That's great, and, and let's, um, let's, let's plan on something outdoors if that, if folks are good with that. And then we, we always want to have a backup, because I, I understand it gets windy up there.
All right. Questions right now. My husband says the fishing up in Red Feather is best when it's windy, so.
Interesting. It's good to know.
Um, I don't have any other questions and we don't have any hands raised, so. I need your show at this point, Commissioner.
Yes, well, if it's my show, it might be somewhat startling, but I, I would recommend that we end the show a little bit early. No harm in that. I, I, I want to say, once again, as always, much gratitude to all of you who take the time to do this together. I, I think there's value and I welcome your input, welcome your feedback. At 1:30 is the Red Feather Lakes Planning Advisory Committee, the PAC meeting. And I'm gonna, it's virtual, I think it might even be a hybrid. And that, and that's the other thing to consider. Well, we'll have to discuss it with Michelle. We could have a hybrid meeting, I believe, where folks who are comfortable meeting in person have that option. And folks who may not be comfortable could do it this way. So let's please keep that in mind. But the Red Feather Lakes PAC meeting starts at 1:30. And I, one of the items on the agenda is that one of our IT folks, Mark Olson, I believe it is. Will be presenting much more detail. And maybe Pam, Marcus Bowsey on the, on the broadband speed testing. So more details and people who are much more informed than I am will be there to answer questions about that.
And one thing, Commissioner, just for everybody to know, we do record this meeting and we'll put it up on our YouTube. It usually takes a few hours for the video to process, but if you guys want to go back and watch it. Or if you have a neighbor who may be missed today, they can go back and watch the meeting as well. So I wanted to remind everybody of that.
So I think we'll sign off, but I just want to also wish folks a happy and safe and healthy Independence Day. And, you know, please celebrate accordingly and I, I just wish you all well and I do care about you folks. Thanks. And thanks, Paulina and, and Michelle. Bye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Bye.